If you've got, if you've got county counties that are out there where they're in their rural and they got, they've got agriculture when having them, they're considered rural. But actually was a really nice meeting that we had. And they, they went over a lot of stuff and I'll kind of go over some stuff quick here. Bear with me because it's been a couple of weeks, three weeks now, so.
Okay.
Michelle was going to check and see if Ben was coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I like how you, you're very efficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, on the farm bill, counties that support legislative action to streamline application process for reporting requirements for the farm bill progress such as reconnect program and rural innovations prize grant stuff, all right? They're, they're wanting to streamline that. So it isn't so, I mean, if you remember when Paul was talking about putting in for that, how much, how many hoops he had to jump through? And so much stuff that made that a difficult grant to apply for. So they're wanting to streamline that. So I thought that was probably a good thing. And I, I actually, you know, that, that was, that's something this committee actually is, or this caucus is pushing. Here was an interesting number. How many of our nation's farms in a percentage way do you think are considered small farms?
Yeah.
That's probably, oh, that is, that's, it'll surprise you. You don't think that living in, in Western Iowa. You get in the Kentucky's and the Tennessee's and all that, them are primarily, you know, farm trader website. They're looking for, they're looking for a big tractor and they need a hundred horsepower, you know? We can't run an auger with that here, you know? So, yeah.
Missouri, Arkansas, Louisiana.
You're saying it'd be higher than what you think?
Yeah, I would say it's probably sixty percent or better yet.
Probably ninety.
Yeah.
Moved my mind. Yeah. I mean, that was where my mind would have went, was sixty or seventy percent. But it was, it's excellent, what you say.
Nobody's coming up from secondary roads.
So I'll, I'll just finish on that, that point there. It just kind of showed that we still need to be focusing on the small farms when we're, when we're creating legislation through the farm bills and stuff like that.
I mean, that's, that's number of farms, that ninety percent, right?
Yeah, basically.
Pretty interesting, the number of acres, percentage of acres that goes ninety percent of farmers.
That would, that would be a good question. That would be neat to know.
I think.
Anyway, since we got Tim here and, and we can always, I can always do some more talking on this at the end here for, we got some time. There's, there is some good, interesting stuff here and I really want to get to it for you, so. But Tim, if you'd like to come forward, I think we've got some time, we can just go ahead and start you and get through the business in hand where.
Next, okay, by sitting here?
Absolutely. I sometimes take up more than my space.
Well, your space is just fine. Dave, morning. So, thank you for the time. So wanted to give an update on our wellness center project and, you know, visit with you guys a little bit about where we're at from that standpoint. So we've had a committee, you know, started with a handful of us. We've got, you know, currently twenty plus, you know, strong. Gene serves, you know, and, and has been a, a great assist, you know, with our committee and our endeavors, but represented from all the public entities and a lot of private citizens that want to see something good happen here in Crawford County, right? So, you know, we, we had a back and forth with the architect earlier this year. Took what they had projected, a twenty-six million dollar project in December. Value engineered to a, an eighteen plus million dollar project. So that, that's where we, you know, sit today, you know, with, with that. From a funding standpoint, we're at, as of last week, a sixty-seven percent fund. Okay, so we make great end roads. You know, the one big shot in the arm was the state of Iowa in March. Granted destination Iowa dollars, you know, to the project in tune of four and a half million dollars. And I'll come back to that in a small moment. The, the next big hurdle that we have is August fifteenth, which is a week from today. We have a CAT grant application due to the state of Iowa. Those, those CAT grants with projects of, you know, probably, you know, they've awarded a lot of smaller projects than what we're talking about. But in recent past, they've awarded up to a million dollars. That's what we're projecting from a, a funding source, you know, through the CAT grant. But they do have additional funding this year versus what they've had in the past. And so we'll be applying for, I don't know, in the name, neighborhood of two and a half million. You know, with that, with the hopes of getting a million dollars or more from the CAT grant. But a month ago or so, when we reached out to those that were administering the program, they said, well, you can, you can apply at sixty-five percent and, and we're there right now. But they, they, they told us that to be, be given serious consideration for that grant, that we needed to be at seventy percent funded, okay? So last week, you know, some really good things that happened and the, the hospital CCMH board met on Monday evening. They had initially proposed or pledged two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on, with the, the sale of the city center here in the community. But they, they met as a board and have increased that pledge in total to five hundred thousand dollars. And I'll come back to that one in a sec, all right? Then the city met with their financial advisor on Tuesday of last week. Meetings, I know our ad hoc committee met on Tuesday and the ad hoc committee is a subset of our larger committee that makes recommendations to city council. But based on, you know, the, the dialogue with the financial advisor, they, they felt comfortable with another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pledged to the project. So city council approved that on Tuesday evening. So their pledge went from the initial seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars, okay? Going back to what CCMH, you know, what they did, which is unique, is, you know, there, you know, we, and when we go out to the private citizens, you know, we're looking at more of a three-year pledge versus asking people to, you know, just to write out a check today, you know, if it gives you more capacity to, to give, or if it's easier to give. So what, what the county or, excuse me, the, the CCMH is doing is they, they are pledging in year one or initially that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, again, from that, that city center sale. But then pledging the additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars over a three-year period for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. So their pledge in total is actually over four years, right? What their, their pledge of the project. So I just, you know, I, I'm putting that out there to, to, to let you know, you know, what, you know, what others are, are looking at and what they're doing. But, you know, again, you know, we need to get to seventy percent to feel comfortable, you know, with, with the CAT, CAT grant pledge. So that's, you know, we've got over five hundred thousand dollars that we need to raise this week in order to get there. The, you know, we're, we're reaching out to other public entities. I think the school is meeting today to discuss, you know, what they can potentially do beyond a land donation. The other, the other public entity would be DM, and we're reaching out to them again this week too. So, so just to let you know that, you know, we're reaching out to the public entities from the private sector. You know, I'm really proud of what our team has been able to do. We got roughly three hundred donors that have committed four million dollars to this project from the private sector and it speaks volumes. And it, it, it's really important, you know, with, with those that administer the CAT grant. The former board member told Jennifer Zup and Jessica Garcia that, you know, the seventy percent is critical, right? But, you know, when you have hundreds of people that are donating versus twenty-five people that donate, it speaks to the overwhelming support that, that we have out here and people recognizing the need, okay? And, and so, you know, that, you know, I'm, I'm doing a lot of talking here, you know, maybe we need to get into some dialogue, but yes, Dave.
Yeah, quick, how, how are you coming with some of our larger employers in Crawford County? Are they, is that what they donated part of the seventy percent or they pledged more or?
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's a really good question. Monogram was, was huge. You know, they, they stepped up, they pledged one point three million. So when I talk to the private sector, you know, they're the largest, you know, entity from a donation standpoint from the private sector. So that one point three is part of that four million I talked about. So one point three for Monogram, two point seven from everybody else. And, and, you know, typically from the private sector, you know, I'm thinking about pledges, you know, over a few years. I probably, that other, other entities are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then, you know, down to going to a soccer game and getting a couple bucks from somebody, right? You know, so that's, yeah.
When I worked the booth at the fair.
Yeah.
Everybody that stopped by was so in favor of it. And I had a family give twenty-five dollars. They said that's all they could afford because they were going out to the midway. Had somebody just give a hundred dollars in the bill just to show support. But I had no one that stopped by to take a look at it that said it wasn't something that needed. And I go back and I think about, and I can't think, it was, would have been in the nineties when Reynolds Gilson and Roy Levers and myself went looking for other, at other wellness centers or in the areas to Jefferson and places. That's how long that I can remember we felt we needed this in, in Crawford County. I feel this is the closest we've ever come to being able to have that amenity for our county. And we're just so close and you guys have done such a fabulous job of knocking on doors. I know there's a lot of people out there that wish they could, but they just can't at this exact time that they supported. When we were talking about it in the beginning, people said, well, we, we run our families to Omaha to, to have something during the weekends. We'd certainly bring them to Denison. So I just feel it's a good project for our community and it's just an amenity that our workforce needs. And we're all the time, they're like, that's the thing we're trying to recruit people. They, they need something like that.
Correct, correct. The other thing that I failed to mention because I teed it up, but, you know, with that four and a half million dollar grant from the state of Iowa with the destination Iowa funds. They have granted the four and a half million, but I think we're the only project that they awarded, you know, I think it's hundred, based, based on the add-on with the, the rural communities and, and, and looking at our project. I think they had a total of a hundred and fifteen million, you know, with, that they awarded through that, that project. We're the only project that they haven't awarded a contract yet. And the reason why is they want to know that we're going to have a project before they officially award those dollars in a contract. So we're at a critical time. We, you know, I, I mentioned the CAT grant and, and, you know, the, the need of being able to get to seventy percent and, and apply next week in order to keep things on track. We need to get back to the governor's office here by the end of this month. You know, regarding that, that four and a half million dollar grant, because it kind of hangs in the balance, to be honest with you. You know, if they, if they are disappointed in our, our progress, when we get back to them here in, in a few weeks. You know, we, we're in, in limbo as it relates to, you know, they may pull those funds and allocate them elsewhere, right? So it's, yeah, it, it would. You know, we, we've worked so hard, you know, to, to, to get to this point. We, you know, there's, you know, it's, it's just, you know, to Gene's point. You know, when we're trying to retain employees, when we're trying to recruit new business. You, you know, that it's, you, you need, you know, when, when people come and look at the community, this is, it's one of the, the first questions they're going to ask. You know, from an equality of life standpoint, you know, what recreational activities do, do I have for not only myself, but for my family? And, you know, we're, we put this together and designed it so it's family centric. You know, we've got a, a child watcher that, that's included in the project.
Well, the other part of it is, you know, we used to see people walking out at Walmart, the, the senior citizens because there's absolutely no place else to walk and walking is key to keeping everything kind of rolling. It's gotten dangerous to walk at Walmart now that, you know, they see them doing it because everything's so close together. I think it fits from, you know, youth to the senior citizens. It fits every, checks everybody all year long, run by the YMCA, which is going to be huge because they are experts in running facilities like that. They have a well-oiled machine on how to make it go. And those are all the, the things that fell into place since we originally started talking about this. And we remember with our ARPA funds, the very first meeting that we ever had, all of the department heads who were part of that committee identified wellness as we had actually set aside an eight and a half for wellness. And then as things kind of changed, we said, well, we challenged the city to, to meet us with that seven hundred and fifty thousand. Kind of set that mark. Now that we've made such great progress and we're so close, I, I think that the ARPA funds that we have, I think there's a way that we could possibly, whether we, because that money has to be spent by two thousand and twenty-six.
Actually, it doesn't. It's in the general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ours.
More than that, man.
Tim, after a conversation yesterday and through today again, that just spurred some thoughts, right? So you get to a seventy percent by next week.
Yep.
So that leaves about five point four million short. So you're guessing you hopefully get another million, million and a half through that CAT grant to get you down about four million. Where's that? Is that, is that a deal breaker? Is if you go that far or is that part, or is that going to be funded through continued public support or is it going to be?
Well, regarding the CAT grant, Kyle, we'll have to be able to demonstrate to them, you know, that we have the ability to, to have a project as well. That, you know, much the same with, with the destination Iowa funds in awarding a contract. They're, they're looking at that as, as well. So the one thing they, they told us, and we've met a couple of weeks ago, K R Buck and myself, we, we met with the, the three local lenders that, that have contributed significantly to this project to visit with them about the potential of a bridge loan. Okay, yeah. So that, that's, you know, that, so that's, that's the, the one thing, you know, that we don't want to use the bridge, you know, but that we are working with the local lenders. And, and also I, I've worked with Marcus Reiner and Whipco because there's some revolving loan funds, not only through Whipco, but with the sister company. And I think that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total. So, you know, the, between the lenders and the utility, you know, we're, we're working on that piece. But as far as other, other sources of, of funding, we're, we're working with Steadfast City, which is a company out of St. Louis, but they're primary there. Doug Rasmussen spent years in the Quad Cities. And there's a federal program that's been out here for over twenty years called New Market Tax Credits. And we're, we're projecting based on their feedback to us, three point six million. You know, through that, that, that pro, program where investors or investor groups come in and buy the tax credits. And, you know, and, and basically provide a seven-year loan back to the project that's forgiven after the seven years. That's how it works. They make, they make, the investor makes their money on the, the credits and, and they really, you know, as, as it relates to this project, we check all the boxes. You know, we, you know, we, we've got a, you know, economically blighted area, you know? We were, from a cultural diversity standpoint, we checked that box. There's just a lot of boxes, you know, as, as far as their major boxes. And then they really want to focus on rural, you know, Iowa and in communities like Denison, you know, to help support. So that, that's one entity. And then the other thing, just to finish that point, we got a, a big grant application that we're working on setting up a meeting in the next week with West Iowa, Iowa West Foundation. So, you know, that, that's a, that's another one that's in the offing right now.
Perfect. Craig, let Craig go next.
I'm just curious, Tim, has there been other wellness centers built recently, meaning in the last five years in a community's the size of Denison? I guess I was just curious what they did for a percentage of individual donations versus grants, I guess. I'm just curious if we're in the, you know, normal ballpark? Is that how most wellness centers are built is by grants like this? Or most of them through individuals and corporations of the community stepping up to the plate?
So, you know, the most recent wellness center in our area that got built is Woodbine and Woodbine's smaller than Denison. But, you know, they had one large private citizen, you know, private citizen down there that, you know, that brought significant funding to that project. You know, you look at communities like a Harlan or a Cherokee, it's their, their county or their, their hospital that, that's big, you know, with, with getting those done. But, but the most recent is, is down in, in Woodbine, but you know.
Was there's fourteen?
I think it was around fifteen million. Yeah, yeah. But, you know, when we, when we put the, this whole, you know, we, we looked at the twenty-six million and couldn't figure out a way to realistically get to that number, you know? And that's where, from a value engineering standpoint, we, we arrived down to this eighteen to nineteen million, but eighteen plus million dollar number. And we looked at, from a funding standpoint, you know, splitting it out. You know, if we could raise five to six million from the private sector, if we could raise five to six million from the public sector, if we could raise five to six million dollars from grant and foundation monies, that's how we get there. So that's been our plan with this project. But there, every project's different. You know, it's just, it's just dependent on, you know, the county, the area and, you know, how they look at funding. But, you know, certainly a, a public entity or public entities are, are critical, you know, with any project that's out here.
So I guess I'm just a little disappointed that the county's largest employer has not stepped up to the plate yet.
Yeah. And they haven't told us no, Craig, you know, and Craig's referring to Smithfield, obviously.
Right, that was actually one of my questions.
Yeah, yeah. So, so initially, they told us no, but, you know, but what they were, you know, what they were thinking of, you know, they, they were thinking in terms of writing a check in twenty-three or writing a check now. And, you know, sometimes when you, you come to entities, you know, funding, like, you know, to, to projects like this get committed in the first half of the year, right? You know, or earlier in the year. And then, you know, funding drop, dries up. But they, they are in serious consideration of looking at a longer-term grant, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, maybe beyond. You know, the Monogram pledge, you know, I mentioned CCMH, you know, I, I'll tell you the specifics of that. You know, they, they've got a, a million dollars that they're committing upfront, you know, with that one point three million dollars. But their, the other three hundred thousand dollars, they're committing at thirty thousand dollars a crack over a ten-year period. It doesn't fit our construction timeline, but we'll figure that out. You know, the big thing is, you know, we just have to get monies pledged, get to this seventy percent number and just, you know, keep us on the, the path to success.
Do you think with Smithfield, I mean, wellness would be critical to their operations with that?
Yeah.
It's not the largest employer.
They, they haven't told us no, we just don't have a commitment.
Even a play, are you going to meet with them because of this time sensitive right now?
We're, we're meeting with them, but I don't, I don't think any significance of a pledge, you know, in the neighborhood of, you know, what we're talking to the public entities about, what we're talking to, you know, any of the, the, the private entities that we're closing, you know, where we're at with them right now is where we're going back to former employees that are in, in, in executive VP roles. If you remember Todd Gurkin when he was here, you know, down in Kansas City, you know, I, I, we, so I know Steve Brownmiller and K R Buck met with, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he's out of Sioux Falls. And he came down here a, a few weeks ago, maybe, maybe it was only two weeks ago, but two to three weeks ago, he was here. They, they gave him a tour. They met with Mike Pardun up at the schools. They, they had dinner, talked about it, but that was his suggestion. You know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to, you know, overstep our bounds because I had that idea. We had that idea a long time ago, go to, you know, somebody like Todd Gurkin who was, you know, was, we know was a strong about Denison and everything else. But sometimes you don't want to, Dave, you don't want to overstep the local entity. You want to work through the local entity. But, you know, that's, that's where we're at. We're, we're that I, I don't think that that's, we're, we're going to get anything of significance this week, you know?
Have you had any conversations with Region Twelve? Being our cog, have they been able to do anything?
Yeah, well, they, they, they've helped with smaller grants, you know, UP for one, you know? We've, we've, we've received two grants from them of about twenty-five grand and we've got one more grant, I think, that's in the offing there with UP. You know, so they've, they've get, given us the list, you know, but, but, but primarily beyond that then is Jennifer Zup and Jessica Garcia have been instrumental in our grant writing and then, so we've done a lot of that in-house. And those, those two have done a really good job. They, they were the ones that, that wrote the grant opportunity for Destination Iowa. And they got the, the ball started. And then we had Steve Brownmiller and, and Paul Osman and Derek Lambert were critical in bringing those monies back. Yeah.
And turnover lasts, don't.
They did, they all, absolutely.
And.
Kyle, please.
Very quick point. You mentioned a school. I mean, I think yesterday you said they were going to meet.
They're, they're meeting.
As far as I can, just looking at, they're trying to be the largest benefactor. You know, they're going to benefit pretty strongly. If they donate the land, they get that, they're, they're layered.
We, we expect a financial commitment from them today.
Perfect, perfect. Has there been any pledges that have been, say, business like Monogram or whatever, do they get, have you had any pledges where they are, if you pledge, will give you, your employees a one-year membership type deal?
So, so they're, they're.
A pledge with benefits.
Yeah, they're, they're all looking at that. You have probably, you know, the, the employer that we've gone the furthest down the road and talking about that on the operational side is CCMH.
Right.
And Aaron, she's all in on that. Yeah, yeah. And so, yes, my, I know Monogram. You know, I, I, I would expect a lot of employers, Kyle, not to provide a, you know, a, a, a membership, but subsidize a membership, you know, that maybe pay half of a membership, you know, for their key employees. And that's how we get.
I guess where I was going with it, the board decided to say, say, we're going to match what Denison did. Is there a way we could use that as health and wellness?
Yeah.
Our employee. Maybe that'd be the way to fund it through our health and wellness, but we don't, we really don't have a health and wellness fund that we use other than for screenings. Until we're actually, we're paying for memberships, but also helping pay for the building. Is what I was kind of thinking of. But, and I'm guessing, what do you estimate for found on project cost? You know, eighteen million is it going to turn into a with inflation? Every project always runs.
We've got, we've got twenty percent contingency built into this. And when I've, you know, so, so, so that, that, that's a, that number today is two point seven million, right? You know, so that's, it, it's a, that's a healthy number. You know, when I've, you know, I've done a lot with these small hotel projects over the years and we plan on contingency, but nothing, we don't plan on, on twenty percent. You know, when a lot of projects, you look at five, ten percent as being a lot when you're talking about a several million dollar project, right?
And I'm, and I'm thinking, what I've been noticing with remodeling everything after the hail, actually some of the costs have started scaled back. So about eighteen million with, maybe with these costs, put you on back, it'd be a pretty solid.
Fingers crossed. And that's, you know, Paul's alluded to that too, you know, that, that when he's talking, looking at price of steel and different things that, you know, we're starting to get some stabilization at least, right? Yeah.
If anybody got anything else?
Oh, I don't.
Greg?
What is going to be, do you have an idea of what typical cost for a membership, family, single, individual?
I, I think it'll be, so we've worked with the, so this is a, a good topic too. So we've worked over the last year with Dan Haynes, who's CEO of the Atlantic YMCA. And we're, we're within thirty days projected of having an agreement in place for the Y to run this facility. Right now, the, the, the agreement, the, the agreement's there, you know? But it's, you know, what they're doing is, is attorneys are having a back and forth as far as some of the language, you know, that's, you know, that we're kind of at the eleventh hour as far as getting that agreement in place. So when we, when we look at, at the Y, it'll, it'll mimic, Dave, you know, what, what the Atlantic Y is doing. And it, and it also, you know, we go back to, we, the, the, the city and, and the project, we had hired Foursquare to do a market analysis. And it, it'll be similar to what they had recommended too. So I, I think, you know, for a family membership in the four to five hundred dollar area on, on an annualized basis or, you know, break that down monthly, you know, that's, that, that'll be the, the ballpark, I think, you know, for, for a family, yeah.
Does the Y do stuff then where we're looking at our lower income families? You know, where there might be a mom that's wanting something for her kids to do while she's still at work, you know, say it's a single parent.
Yeah, that I, I have found, you know, because we get these. Yeah, yeah, that I I have found, you know, because we get these questions too with programs, you know, that, you know, is it, are you in a box? Or, you know, it, I I think, you know, that my my experience with Dan Haynes and how the Y runs. Uh, they they look at each individual community and look at the the needs of that community, obviously, you know, from a a P and L standpoint, from an operating standpoint. You know, they need membership income, you know, to, uh, you know, to to make the thing fly, you know, that's to- top line, you know, that's how you're gonna pay your expenses. And, uh, but but, yeah, that they're gonna look at anything on that end, Ty, that, uh, that that meets the community's needs, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Who's gonna own the building?
The city of Dennison.
So they're gonna be obligated to look after its maintenance.
Yeah, well, you know, the op- from an operating budget standpoint, there's a there's a line item that is there for maintenance. Uh, the other thing that we plan on doing, uh, and City of Woodbine had done it, you know, we we talked to them, cause it was, you know, I, it was interesting. Cause Steve Brown Miller and I, myself, when we went down to tour that facility, we talked about it on the way there. Uh, but they they've put together an endowment, okay? So the the concept of the endowment and, you know, what we would hope to raise, you know, with that over time is a couple million dollars. So, you know, if I drive five percent on on that couple million dollar endowment, I've got a hundred thousand dollars to to utilize on an annualized basis. For any shortfalls on maintenance, uh, any shortfalls on from an operating standpoint, so that's the concept. And I think the other thing that, like, say, Atlantic does, they have an annual fundraising event, uh, you know, to for for the the entity, uh, down there. It it sounds similar to, you know, what we're more familiar with with Carol Kemper and the the Kemper Ball, you know, it's kind of set up like that. So, you know, those those are, you know, some of the ideas as far as, you know, the. Yeah, but, yeah, uh, ultimately, the responsibility, you know, if the roof goes bad or whatever, what have you, it will fall on the city with the city membership.
Kind of outlined, obviously, everybody knows what the city or the counties gave, or public entities, you know, any public entity, even including our hospital, you'll know, but, uh. Like on the the local populace, I mean, are you creating a wall that says donors, or, I mean, have you used that actually to your advantage to try to recruit funding?
I think we've got a hand handful of larger donors that that have name, you know, so we've got naming rights opportunities. Obviously, Monogram, you know, with their donation will be, you know, front and center, you know, there's other entities that have pledged, you know, hundreds or, you know, or well over a hundred thousand dollars. That have their name on on different.
Have you published a list of all the people that have donated in the amount, sir?
Uh, uh, not not amounts, but we've utilized the newspaper every other week here, Craig, you know, to to just a a list of names. Yeah, so we have, we have published, you know, those that have donated. But as far as, yeah, the other thing, Ty, to answer your question, there will be a a naming wall. I don't think we've determined, you know, it, you know, it probably won't be spaced, uh, you know, for those that have given five dollars at a soccer game or the county fair. There probably won't be space for that, but yeah, I I, you know, I'll just throw out a number. I I would I would guess that the donors of twenty five hundred dollars or or more, you know, will find a way to get their name up on the naming wall. That that's just, that's that's a concept.
There's a lot of it like at the hospital, or they have, you know, there's, uh, you're giving treatments, what we called that back in those days, so.
And and I just think, you know, and I'm looking forward, obviously, I think if if we've got a big project like this that has success. It could breed more success in future things that this community and others in our county need.
We bring this, right? Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I'm I'm just saying, if if we're if we're recognizing people for for, you know, going up above and beyond in in some in some instances, and at least contributing significantly. Or contributing in any way, I mean, even if you sold bricks for the sidewalk, you know, that like you see at some of our stones, you know, those types of things. I mean, I I don't know what all that costs and how much that.
I think I think Payar's talked about doing something like that on the walking track, you know, you know, just, you know, that that that's that's a possibility of looking, looking at that. But the others, and but in in part, you know, we if we if we have a name, if somebody's giving us five bucks, you know, their name's in the paper right now. Yeah, so so just, you know, that it 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 doesn't matter if it's five dollars or hundreds of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's all important. You know, for what we're trying to do.
And is there a reason you don't list the amount? I guess I'm just curious.
Um, I think some people would have angst as far as, you know, we we've we've had some express, you know, that they want to remain anonymous. But they have agreed to put, have us list their name in the paper, you know, if if we don't list an amount, so that's why.
I mean, I got no problem, I guess, with anonymous and a dollar amount, but I I think it'd be, I guess, not just from a curiosity standpoint, but I think it'd be from a community standpoint. If you've got the banks contributing.
Yeah.
You know, one bank's at twenty five, two banks are at twenty five, and one's at five, it's like.
They they, you know, they don't care, so so I'll I'll throw it, I'll throw those out, I'll throw those out here. Yeah, United Bank of Iowa and, uh, let me think, United Bank of Iowa and Bank Iowa have pledged a hundred thousand. And Crawford County Bank, and based on the relationship with FNIC coming in to to purchase Tams Agency, so they've got kind of a dual entity there. They they've done a hundred and fifty thousand, plus what they've done is employees that have contributed, they're matching up to five hundred bucks. So they, I don't, I don't know, we probably got.
Oh, so for each employee, if you got an employee that puts five hundred, they'll match that.
Yeah, they are.
Outstanding.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, there's, there there's, well, and that's, you know, even tied, yeah, they they mash up to five thousand. Yeah, yeah, so we've we've got, we've we've got those type of things that are going on now.
See, and that's encouraging news, that, I mean, I think that you're you're missing out on at this point, you know, I mean, that makes me feel good about the community.
Yeah.
I mean, when big employers get big, you know, you 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 hope for it, and and I wouldn't say you expect it, but it 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 helps their entire workforce's health. So it's, you can see where they would wanna contribute, but when you see, you know, the the banks, you know, that depend on us, as we depend on them. But then they show their thanks through a program like this, I I think that's that's great to hear.
We are, we actually, you know, okay, so let's talk to this, let's talk outside of Dennison, Westside. That I I'm talking off the top of my head, but I think their their pledge is twenty five grand, so we've we've got, you know, we've had that go on. And and then, yeah, so that's where I'm going, you know, so we had initially, uh, two companies, uh, or businesses out of Ida Grove. That that have business here, that have done made significant pledges, both Midwest Industries and Gomaco. Uh, that have employees in Crawford County, uh, they donated the project, and then, uh, here roughly a week ago, we we received a pledge, a significant pledge from Kell. Uh, out of the Carol operations, with the same thing. So it's it's not only Crawford County employers, we're getting others on board that see see the the need and the benefit. And and the other thing is, you know, when I talk about, you know, the 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 team that brought the four and a half million dollar grant, you know, back to Dennison. And Patrick, uh, I think Patrick's last name is Tonka with the governor's office, he told those guys, he sees this project. As a transformational project for Western Iowa, because the uniqueness, particularly with the the fieldhouse, the turf field concept. The ability from a tourism standpoint of bringing people from the outside in and seeing, you know, what we have. There isn't, there won't be anything like what we were putting together outside of going to an Omaha Council Bluffs or Des Moines, you know, and possibly Sioux City. You know, so you're you're going to larger cities, we'll we'll in in West Central Iowa, we'll kind of own it, right? You know, we'll we'll have have that, uh, that opportunity here.
Who who do you, are you gonna hire one director? How many staff do you think it'll take? Um, will that director, you know, you're talking on that realm of, you know, in Omaha and Council Bluffs, the bigger cities, they have multiple tournaments throughout the year for AAU and those type sports. It's almost like having a good CDC director to fully utilize.
Yeah, yeah, so the structure with the Y is they don't do new franchises they haven't done for several years. So we'll be aligned with the Atlantic Y. This this entity, the Dennison Y, uh, Crawford County Y, will will have a a separate board that oversees the entity. But they'll they'll be, you know, sister companies, if you will, they'll be, you know, both the Atlantic Y and Dennison Y, we'll we'll be working together, okay? Uh, so from an employee standpoint, you know, Dan is CEO out of Atlantic, uh, you know, he'll 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 help to oversee. The the acting CEO in in for Crawford County, the facility up here, and and then, yeah, uh, he's, you know, he's got a plan. You know, and and it's just, you know, then it's just a matter of, uh, you know, what makes good business sense, right? You know, what what the the, uh, the facility can drive from a membership and revenue standpoint. And, uh, you know, bringing key employees along that can that can help drive the programming, et cetera, to to make this thing good to great, right?
So that'll have a lot of separate audit, though, for the Dennison facility.
Yes.
And you can present that.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tim, would you expect that the revenue generated will carry the the operation after it gets built?
Yeah, so that when he's put together a a pro forma, uh, you know, looking at, uh, the operating expenses. Uh, he's projecting a a breakeven year one, uh, he is projecting, what was it, year three, once it gets stabilized and and yeah, full membership? I think it was, uh, in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in 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 profit, right? Over and above expense, so that's what that's what the P and L would show, based on his projections and work with that. And I I should say this, uh, the plan is is for, uh, the the Y to take over the operations of the the Aquatic Center. You know, as part of this wellness campus, and based on projected savings, I think it's in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. That the city will be contributing to the bottom line, you know, with with that that this new new entity. Uh, based on what what they'll be saving by not having to hire the employees and staffing, et cetera.
Cal, do you got a question?
I just after a year or three of your starting to go profit, will that get dumped into the city's general fund, being there, the owners of the facility? And then get put into a street repair project and then building yard, or is it gonna be? I hope they set up a special fund.
Well, the 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 Y's a separate entity, you know, the city's gonna own it, but it's not, you know, that that that's not, yeah.
The Y makes.
They're they're making the decisions, the city's not making the decisions, you know.
Or any of that, then some of that money should be put back going for maintenance.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
That endowment, right?
Yeah.
No, I would just want to know the profits.
No, no, when we.
Is it a sharing profit?
Yeah, a- any business, you know, in in the businesses that that we've helped create, you know, on the the small hotel front, right? You have a what they call a replacement reserve, right?
Right.
Yeah, and you establish that based on the revenues generated and get to a comfortable number over time. And and I would I would envision that would be, yeah, we we that would be looked at here.
All right, so they're they're more than, okay, I get by.
I would like to know one more thing, Chris, I think I've only got one last question. All right, we're, if you count ninety nine counties, you say that's a hundred percent, we're in the bottom ten percent on health, we might be in the bottom five percent.
Aaron talks about O P C D rates here.
And, yeah, I mean, that's just one of the aspects, you know, I I I think, you know, we wear out, but I'm, I. I would like to know that, you know, Aaron would have, that, you know, they would have some go go between to work on our health problems and this service that. You know, I mean, you you are you following, are you tracking there?
Yeah, 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 no, she, and you've gotta know, i- i- and I I don't know how well that all of you know Aaron Buck, but she's all in on this.
Very well.
Yeah, she's all in, and, you know, there, you know, I've got it working right now, uh, the the new market tax credits team, Steadfast City, you know, as they're approaching it. Investment capital, you know, for that, those tax credits that are out there. Uh, they put out a a kind of a a boilerplate or a template of, you know, potent potential hell and wealth initiatives, right? So Aaron's looked at that, and she's she's added to, you know, that, you know, so so, yeah, they're they're. The 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 hospital will be front and center, you know, they're they're limited, I think, you know, from, um, you know, how they utilize the facility for physical therapy. And different things based on the distance away from the the primary facility. But, you know, from a programming standpoint, and how we're looking to enhance health and wellness here within the county and surrounding area, that they'll they'll be, they'll be frozen.
They do bring people into the pool now.
Right.
To, uh, for physical therapy.
Yeah.
And there's also a program with Social Security Silver Sneakers, which will help the seniors that are need help with, uh, so that's a big benefit. Cause seniors are really the ones that need to get out, not only, but they are limited to where they can walk, just because, so that's, to me, it's huge.
I mean, when you're asking us to come, obviously, you're asking us to commit some more money, and 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 they were, these are the priorities, at least in my mind. And talking with these four here, I I this is our priorities, you know, looking after the community, and in particular, those that may. I don't want this to be an exclusive, but, you know, I mean, I I wanna make sure that everybody can enjoy the benefits of it, you know. And I mean, obviously, you guys have put some thought into that, so that's good, I mean, you answered that question. And then my concerns of, you know, hey, I'm not, I'm not petite myself, so I mean, I know that I probably need a little health and health and wellness work, but. But I I I want, I really wanna make sure that that's focused on, and so you've answered.
I've done, I've got a a friend, uh, up at, uh, you know, Candy and I have a condo up at, uh, Okavango. And I've got a a friend that, uh, you know, he's a retired teacher that services the needs of our pool there at at the the condo, right? And but Ron has neuropathy, which, uh, you know, he has to get an infusion once a a month. Uh, and he's, I'm guessing, ten years older than I am, right? Uh, but but he talks about, you know, he he's got brother in laws that, you know, go go from refrigerator to 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 couch to, you know, to, you know, that he describes his brother in laws. But he said, that's not gonna be me, right? And so he he talked about that his utilization of their Y up there. And that he goes three times a week, you know, during the the winter to walk and exercise and do things, because he's just committed to, you know, basically keeping things stable, right? You know, because we all get thrown health challenges over time, right? Yeah, and it's, so it, and and so it's just, uh, you know, I I think it's critical, uh, that 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 we offer a facility like this to our citizens. And we do the things like you're saying, you know, ma- make it, uh, available to those that wanna utilize, right? So.
Well, I will say that when we were doing the directors hiring, some of them you talked to, that were the questions they'd bring up for what we're doing on these things. Because that actually helps grow not only business, but people and healthy people to your communities, you know, and, uh, I think that that's. Obviously, I'm not trying to be your salesman here, I mean, that's, your 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 points aren't falling on deaf here.
Yeah, how do we get the 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 younger generation to wanna come back, right? Yeah, exactly.
The cities are used to having them all, so this is a take action item today, so. I would make a little, I've done with your questions to fulfill the our wellness commitment to our community. And that's what the city's doing at two hundred and fifty thousand of our ARPA funds.
Well, Gene, all right, before you finish your motion, I mean, uh, let's kind of discuss that, or I guess you can make your motion, yeah, go ahead and make your motion.
I've had them, I for the last seconds before.
Yeah, go ahead, make your motion.
That's, that would be my motion from the ARPA funds, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help from this project that we started with our ARPA funds. Day one, when they were awarded to us, uh, in an effort to make our community have a wellness program out there.
Good.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
So with motion and a second, two hundred and fifty thousand out of our funds, then our funds are penciled out, but not.
They're penciled out.
But not, uh, signed away, and we can maneuver things around. Where are you thinking about, what the list, like, materials, and what, what do you wanna adjust?
My thought would be, uh, for discussion.
And that's why I bring it up, so that we're all on the same page of what we're gonna use and where.
Cut the rest of that money was going to be used for the communication, which is also very, very important project communication in case of a pandemic, uh, our tower reserve running. We had always planned on doing the towers before we had, so that was just a blessing, gonna help to, maybe it happened to take that out of the taxes. I don't know, can we take it out of the, some of it, out of the nine one one? You got the balance of that?
Take what?
For the towers.
They have a board, they have.
Could they?
Time with the professor board.
Right, right, right.
E M A.
They've already kicked in some.
Good.
I mean, on the list that Terry sent out, I mean.
I mean, on the list that Terry sent out, I mean, this was, I guess, before I was here, but we have a tower project with a dollar amount, eight ninety-six. And I'm assuming is that eight ninety-six just the what was remaining after we have given our ARPA funds to these other entities and that's what was left over, so the tower companies have our tower project? Is there a dollar amount that?
It's ongoing.
That we're gonna need?
Yeah.
Right, we're gonna.
Well, we don't know what our end dollar is. We know that that we know that the the rate come is probably gonna cost us nine and a half yet.
We're a million and a half just to get our equipment on our towers.
That's the equipment on, I mean, we've got the towers built. And we've got, you know, the shelters purchased. Most of that stuff, Greg's actually been hustling here the last few days on getting the LP tanks placed and LP in them and we got the fence projects that, you know, they're they're out there doing gravel as as we speak, aren't they leveling and doing gravel work? And then the fence project will come in with the chain link and then we just, we've really only got the one tower site that we've got barbed wire we're gonna put on, so that's
I guess.
Good news.
Speed.
Yep.
Wrap that up, I mean, that tower project is, you know, we have a goal here, but we're kind of past that goal already. And we've already committed to purchasing all the equipment, so that.
Right.
So you're you're either gonna have to pull that out of the general fund or, you know, the ARPA funds were, like you said, they were a blessing, but I mean, it actually finished off this project or at least got close.
Substantially.
Yeah, and.
Because what is the total cost of the tower project since we started into end game?
It started at two point eight million or probably up to.
Five.
And and I still think we're doing, I, you know, to credit to what they did before and what you're doing now and, you know, what we're doing now, I the Turkleson report predicted nine and nine and a half million, so I mean, we're we're being fiscally prudent in that regard. You know, and I guess part of what we got to look at is what are we, you know, what's our responsibility as a county as a whole? You know, primarily is whether it's the towers and or other projects. I think this actually falls in line with something that, you know, I mean, I think the whole county will use this and I think it'll benefit the whole county. Will the other county or the other towns use it as much as Denison? Probably not, you know, I mean, but that's just a guess, I mean, you know, they may, but Dave, you got something?
Great, I got a question, if we were to do this, match the city and move two hundred and fifty thousand ARPA to the Wellness Center going forward, like we have in the past, were we levying so much every year for the community? Would you see any problems with that or any delays or?
Well, the hopefully, but the communication system is to get some people to co-locate on it and and help fund it. We're we're way late on that, we're about five years behind, because the one veil would have never been built, we would have been on that one. But there's there's always somebody out there that's what, and that's not, it could be the wind turbine people that want an anometer on there free. And nobody pronounced that right for wind.
Yeah, I don't know.
The goal, the goal is to get some people on it to fund our project.
Yep, that's the long-term goal, you bet, yeah.
So we've we've been levying prior, for how many years have we been levying for the towers?
Did that start? Well, twenty sixteen was probably the first year we started lev- levying for it, we started talking about it twenty fifteen, so like the first year we put a hundred thousand away and then we started ramping it up because we knew we'd never get it paid for at that rate.
Yeah.
So is this eight ninety-six that's listed, is that the total amount remaining to pay or?
We haven't got our bill from Raycom. We'll be over a million, million two probably. In my experience.
Million two is kind of what I've been hearing, so. And that's.
Right, and that doesn't include the five hundred thousand that gets transferred into EMA. And that's not just tower money, I'm not saying that.
Right.
Because he has other operations that he has to conduct through EMA.
It's for utilities, I mean, yeah, utility, generator and.
Right. But it could be used for equipment if needed.
Yeah.
Power wise.
Well, I mean, we we even if if you if you give ARPA, if we give ARPA to them, we're still gonna have a long-term, I shouldn't say long-term, but several years of levy increase levies that will have to be committed to the tower system. You know, we could use some out of the general, obviously, but that's got to be, you know, we always got to try to replace our general.
All right, we're going to please general, but yeah, it's a little bit longer term commitment for us to fulfill our needs for towers. Because you're basically just taking some of that ARPA funds and putting it wellness and.
And or, you know, that's either that or you could commit, you know, multiple years to the this, it's that's, it's a Peter Paul.
It really is, but. As I, through our conversation, I wrote down on paper here that I would try to push that out over a number of years and pay for it through health and wellness through the county. Because that's actually what we'd be promoting is health and wellness, and we have, we really don't have, but that's what I had, so maybe do it, do a hundred thousand right now and then do the rest out of over a couple of years or.
Does that still?
Yeah, yeah, yes, it does, yeah, so what what CCMH did, you know, that that they, you know, the two hundred and eighty thousand upfront and then the 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 remaining pledge on the two twenties, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, yes, that still counts. The monogram pledge that, you know, that I described, it still counts.
So what you're saying, Kyle, is not that, you'll only do like a hundred thousand of the ARPA now and then levy through our wellness fund?
That's what I was thinking.
The difference over three years.
Yeah. I'm just afraid.
We don't have a wellness fund, I don't know what fund you're talking about, are you talking about our self-funding fund?
No.
Our our not self, yeah, our insurance, what are you talking about?
We want transfer money and to pay for our.
Right, but that transfers from our eighty-five hundred fund, which is our self-funding for insurance.
Family.
So you're going to increase the depletion of that fund, which we're already suffering, I'm not, I'm not.
Put another line.
Yeah. I'm not sure where you were thinking.
Can we put another line item in fifty-one to fund this?
That's where I thought we were coming from, it was like area fifty-one.
Right.
I was thinking that we had, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
No. I mean, we don't.
I know, we do, we do flu shots, we do the, yeah.
We don't, I mean, we do prevent, that's where I was going, because I'm just afraid we're gonna get a bill from Raycom and I don't want to commit money that we already to to this project that we've kind of already don't know where that goal is gonna be, you know, like bill comes in from Raycom January first and it's less than we thought, can we kick that money left over to that project? I mean, there's no penalty for paying it off early, would there be, Tim?
No, absolutely not, yeah, yeah, you can write a check tomorrow if you want to.
You know, that's, I'm just, I'm afraid of our our current commitments with the tower project. Because I don't know how we would feel going to Raycom and say, hey, we're about three hundred thousand short, we're gonna pay for that over the next three years, they might be upset. Where we can be upfront with your committee and this project and say, we're gonna pay this, but we're gonna do it over a three-year time period. That's what, that's where I was at.
On that note, great, since you're here, do you see that as an issue with the towers?
What?
You don't know. Like I said, we can pay it off early, one, two, eight, one, five, we still gonna have to have maintenance on top of that.
Are they done with Raycom?
No. No, no, they've shipped the dishes and that's about all that's happened, so I mean, I don't know what they're.
Wouldn't you potentially see them being finished, you know?
Well, our our goal is the end of the year, but I would imagine it's.
The end of this year?
Yes, we'd probably end to next next year, they still got to order the equipment, who could have given them total, okay? I mean, we've been, we've gotten some some equipment in that we've had to move around. So the cell sites there right now, when it, like Ty said, they're they're gonna.
And there'll be more bill for that, I'm sure.
Generator, yeah, generators are all here.
Yeah, well, let's pay for them.
Well.
They're already paying.
We're paying for those, we're gonna have, we're gonna get a bill from cell site plus the plus the other stuff.
And then probably more from RFCC. Okay, I and that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion, if we wanted to do a multi-year thing on your, and you're you're only saying two hundred and fifty, but I could say two, you know, you can, I guess you've made the motion second and now, so we'd have to amend it if we'd say that we want to do it over a hundred, like Kyle suggests, a hundred now and and then the next, over the next three years, you get fifty each, you get your hundred, two hundred and fifty commitment then.
I'm willing to amend my motion.
Okay. Is is that work, is that something?
You know, I feel a lot more comfortable about that, I'm just.
Okay.
I I agree, we got to be able to pay our bills and complete here and we're already committed to a tower project.
Spread some of our risk out. Having a Raycom.
Yeah, I'll I'll comment that it it meets our needs because we're trying to, these pledges, we're trying to. Well, yeah, we're checking the boxes, yes, today, but but i- if we look at it over a few year period, it 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 coincides with the constructions, right? So that that works too, when you think about it in that that thing, right?
So you're saying a hundred thousand now and fifty thousand for the next three years?
Dave, you got something?
Just to be clear, to clarify, a hundred thousand would come out of our performance.
Right, it's all coming out of general fund.
Yeah, ARPA is in general, so it would constitute out of our, you could call it that it was out of our.
Right, because we do have that.
Can be.
When it's separated out.
Clarify now, how we're gonna do this, you know, you're right, it, either way, whether you take it out of ARPA now and have to pay more out of general for towers, you know, give or take, doesn't matter.
But the ARPA funds has helped us get these, all these project stuff, it checks all of our boxes, all those projects.
Well, and it and it tells ARPA that we were committed to the community health project.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and I guess we got to, I got to, I got to have an amendment to that motion first.
Mr. Paul. To amend.
That's, I'm I'm trying to remember what I learned on it, Nate.
Well, and I.
So I need the motion for your, I need a motion for your amendment.
Motion to amend.
Yeah, amended.
My motion would be a hundred thousand now and fifty thousand for the next three years.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for that motion, we have to vote on that on on.
We have to vote on the amendment.
On the amendment first. So the original motion is now to be amended, that it will be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment, however, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars initial and in the three years to follow will be, am I getting that right?
Yes.
It will be for fifty thousand each year. The motion was made by Ms. Hayden and seconded by Mr. Dozar.
This is only a vote on the.
This is only a vote on the amendment. Okay, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, now back to the original motion, which will be.
Amended.
As amended, very good. Back to the original motion now as amended, we can put that before them. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I would ask you to all, all in favors, state so by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you so much for your confidence in us and project and look forward to being able to provide good news here in the not-too-distant future, so.
Thank you for all you do, thank you for keeping the hope for us.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim, we appreciate it. Coming, thanks for, sorry for keeping you so long, but we have to work through.
It's it's what I do, so.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay, discuss take action resolution twenty twenty-three to thirty-one to pay back inter-fund temporary operating.
So we're gonna approve the resolution as though I went to heck on this.
Thank you. Okay.
I make a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion, the motion was made by Mr. Schultz and seconded by Ms. Hayden. Do we have any further discussion? It is a resolution, Mr. Mulbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Dozar.
Aye.
Ms. Hayden.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Discuss take action liquor licenses, top Iowa Lucky Wife.
Where is this place?
Yeah.
When they have their, whatever their.
Yep. The.
I have a little party or.
The event's August twenty-sixth.
Wolfies Ash?
No, it's not. Grand Finnerings, um, they do it out at his folks' farm.
Wolfies is in, I think he probably had to get through town.
We already did Wolfies.
Yeah, we already did that one.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license on top of Iowa Lucky Wife. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr.
I did, but it don't.
You said, you already made it?
He made it, I second it, but it don't matter.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Schultz and seconded by Mr. Dozar. All in favors, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favors, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, tax abatement, one nine or one one nine one, highway thirty-seven, Dunlap, Tara, Jeremy Christiansen, new dwelling. Is Dwayne gonna come up?
I'm gonna sur- assume, I would think that he, I'm assuming Dwayne puts it on the agenda and I'm assuming that Dwayne has vetted all of the right paperwork, otherwise it wouldn't be on the agenda.
Right, but he'll have some details on that.
He'll have to come up.
The value. Needs to come up.
Kyle's calling.
Yes, sir.
Hey, you got that vetting for me?
On my way up.
All right, we'll wait on it.
All right, very good.
In a few minutes, we could have went on to the other notice, but we will wait.
He's on his way, we could time it, that'd be.
Calling here.
That could be our own personal wellness, standing people up and down the stairs.
I watched Houseman's.
They want to be here for that notice of.
Are you calling him?
No, I don't, well, Greg, you want to run over here? As he's asked.
Termination of farm lease group.
Martha, I guess.
Martha, I think, I think she was off today.
Yep.
Okay, we're already on that, yeah, we're ready for you.
Okay.
Please come up.
Tax statements are in the mail evidently.
Yes, they are, so.
I got mine, yes.
You got mine.
So we have a special, you know. All right, so Tara and Jeremy Christiansen are building a house down by Dunlap. It's on the pavement of the soldier, I guess, if that helps.
Yeah.
And so.
Up there on top of the hill where all the other houses are.
Kind of halfway up on the south side.
Okay.
So they are talking somewhere in the five hundred thousand dollar range. They want the three-year hundred percent, they've got their building permit and they have not started construction. So our recommendation is to approve the exemption.
I'll make a motion to approve the exemption for Tara and Jeremy Christiansen.
So the.
Second, who was the second, sorry?
Sorry.
I didn't hear a second. We were talking about, put it correctly, toward the motion correctly, abatement as opposed to.
Yes, sorry, that's why I did second, that's the wrong word.
All right, so we have a, Ms. Hayden has made a motion to accept the tax abatement for Tara and Jeremy Christiansen on their new dwelling at one one nine one, highway thirty-seven.
Three-year hundred percent.
Three-year hundred percent and seconded by Mr. Dozar. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye. Motion carries, thank you, Dwayne, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Tell them to get to work. Be a nice house. Should be a nice place.
Right there, got it. Let's see the one we read.
If I don't do it now, it's, sorry, you're in the rough.
Get filed in three months and be like, how come this never got signed?
All right, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, Colin's on the phone as we speak, isn't that what you said? Um, I don't want to start on the next discussion yet.
Well, it's something we need, I don't know if we need it or not, I think he dropped, Martha, Collins office drafted up the termination notice. It's pretty standard language.
Oh, sorry.
Lock out. Colin.
Can you turn the knob on that when he gets in here, Craig, so it doesn't happen again?
I love that.
We invite you over and we lock you out.
Farm lease.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Farm lease. This is pretty typical of what we've done after three years of.
It's a pretty difficult bookwork. It's a very difficult bookworm deal after things be done, so.
Signed by the chairman, get it over to Jerry.
So, like I said, his office drafted it up, so.
Okay.
I mean, that's probably way more than what some I've seen scribbled on a piece of paper instead of mail sort of thing.
Right.
You know, I I think we just need to vote on it. If anybody wants to take a look at it, just says they were terminating the lease.
And for history reference, we've typically done this.
Yeah.
After th- three years.
We need to do it by September one.
Yep, and and then we'll, depending what we.
Then we can still discuss what we, what our future plans are.
But in the past, then we've had a farm auction later on in the fall, after harvest.
Right. So I think I'd make a motion to approve the notice of farm lease termination.
Second.
Motion was made to approve the termination of the farm lease in our county farm by Mr. Schultz and seconded by Mr. Mulbauer. Any further discussion?
I'll just say that this probably could have been accomplished without board action, but this is a kind of belt suspenses approach, that because it is county property, that we just have the board.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds official then. All in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do I need to scribble on this somewhere?
Yeah, the first set of lines, yes.
We probably will need to, sooner than later, get our ducks in a row of whether we're going to just rent auction it back off or. Yeah.
We are.
Before we know it could be.
Thanks for coming over, I appreciate it. Okay, and on to a discussion only, uh, North Summit's pipeline, North Dakota ruling and how that may or may not affect Crawford County.
I called in and had that put on just because we did get notification that North Dakota denies Summit carbon pipeline permit. And to me, if we start digging up Iowa and they don't have the permit for North Dakota, we have a pipeline that goes to nowhere. That's something that we should discuss. It does say that they're going to appeal it. So they did not approve their need and so I just thought that was important for us to know. I didn't know how else to get that out there to people that may not have had it sent to them. So I think that's huge myself.
I mean, the article, I guess, that I read, it said Summit was going to reapply.
Right, right, right.
Not necessarily appeal, but reapply.
Yeah.
In the last process, I think, took eight to ten months. And so if you're looking at that timeframe again, um, I don't know, yeah, how construction can start in Iowa.
I don't know why they would want to spend anymore, but we do have Riley in the crowd and Riley, I know you're not an attorney for them, but if you have any information that would help, do you guys want to go ahead and let Riley speak? Does anybody get it all right with that?
Yeah, y'all, feel free to ask any questions. I'm here to answer them. And being a little bit separated from the North Dakota process, uh, I I know a little bit of the decision we respected by the PSC. Um, and we're working to address the concerns. We will be reapplying in the coming weeks. Good news is we're not starting from scratch in North Dakota. Uh, there will be some reroutes, uh, but I know it's all hands on deck, so. The timeline really does depend on how soon we can get that permit back in, get back in front of the PSC, but, uh, we're, it, North Dakota is quite a bit ahead of us in Iowa to start with, so. The way I look at it, it's kind of bringing us all back together, but, uh, it is a very important piece of the puzzle of our sequestration sites in North Dakota, so it's a, it's a very, it's a very important piece to address those concerns. Uh, by the PSC, but at least we know them and we can work from there and respect, so.
Is PSC like their I U B?
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, it's it's virtually the the same as we permit across, so they they permit a route when.
Should ask you, you live there, I would have known that.
Um, so the application was submitted back in October of twenty twenty-two, so it took about ten months. So do you anticipate the new application being taken? Why is that long?
No, like, we're not starting from scratch at this. Like, we're gonna look at the concerns brought up by the PSC and we're gonna address them with reroutes, uh, and other ways that, you know, that how we're we're able to determine the, uh, some of our points of failure within the application and. So we're not starting from scratch. Uh, you know, they will have to probably push out a reroute survey, uh, and luckily, there's not gonna be a whole team diverted, uh, from an entire state. It'll be very, you know, focused.
Dave. Dave, yes.
Riley, do you, you used to wear, Summit still plan to start construction in Iowa, even if this is not approved?
Well, it's just a matter of when we can get in front of the PSC with our, with our permit that's been revised, uh, but it, at the end of the day, we're still going in front of the I U B August twenty-second, uh, that we're still seeing that process taking a little bit of time. Regardless, we're gonna have a better idea, uh, as we're going through this process, how long it's gonna take, uh, but, you know, it, it just might kind of separation from North Dakota to me, it kind of brings us back online with North Dakota. Uh, you know, we may be able to knock Iowa out, get North Dakota done afterwards, but, you know, we still, uh, we still have a lot of work to do in Iowa, uh, so we're still pretty focused on that, uh, so. We're still not even really looking at construction in Iowa, you know. If we get our state permit in Iowa this winter, there's still gonna be quite a bit of time to roll out, figure that out, so. Uh, that's our plan. Uh, Iowa, we're moving forward just like, uh, we always are and, uh, we're ready to go in front of the I U B August twenty-second and go from there.
But I guess to further elaborate on Dave's question, I don't, I don't really have answered there. If North Dakota doesn't approve you.
Yeah.
Are you gonna start working before you actually know, okay, we're good? I mean, North Dakota's your, you have nowhere to go with carbon, so I mean, if they don't, so that's kind of Dave's question, I think. That's how I interpreted it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna know a lot more here pretty soon. At least now we know the concerns of the PSC and we can, we can address them, uh, so, uh, we're hoping that that process moves pretty quick. We, we're very confident we can address those and the PSC will approve us based on their feedback to us. So that can be very well the same case with the I U B, you know, they can come back with a set of concerns and adjustments we, they want us to make as well, so.
Yep, very positive.
Yeah, it's a, it's a process in in every state, you know, everyone handles it a little bit different. Nebraska is a little bit different than Iowa. South Dakota's different than North Dakota.
So you haven't been told that you can offer us that, no, we're not starting dirt work here until we know we can get in up there.
I think, uh, you know, if, there's a lot of people working on, uh, the North Dakota piece right now and understanding, uh, the situation a little bit better, uh, but, uh, the, I know the tentative plan is to reapply here in the coming weeks and I think hopefully more rollout here pretty soon.
Okay, Gene.
So basically, the PSC's giving you all the answers to the test, you know, you kind of know what you have to do, is that basically?
Well, yeah, at at least the issues that they had with our permit and our routing, uh, uh, as we go in front of the process or in front of the PSC, so it, it's kind of like, you know, yeah, you, they're, they're kind of giving us their issues with it, uh, and we can adjust them there, so.
So I have a two-part question.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so you're saying in North Dakota, you can reroute, so their issues are some of the lands that you're going through and some concerns about that, so you talk about reroute, you're gonna just reroute. In Iowa, we have nine hundred fifty parcels of land that are subject to eminent domain, but the reroute has never been talked about in Iowa. Uh, I think nine hundred fifty parcels of land is substantial to think about. Taking all of that land, all eminent domain, when in North Dakota, you're gonna work with their board and kind of work around the issues. I don't understand why we can't do that in Iowa.
Yeah, in North Dakota, the same way, we were gonna have to go back and renegotiate any, um, any route areas that we get settled in, we're gonna have to go back now and renegotiate, uh, and in Iowa, the same way, the state is, the end-all-be-all when permitting, permitting the route. Uh, they say yes or no on our route, we're pretty much locked in right now going in front of the I U B. And I think in the state, we're in, in Iowa, we're at seventy-one percent right now. That doesn't reflect where we're gonna be at, you know, come wintertime. I know we've made some pretty good progress here recently, getting some big tracts of land, uh, agreed upon, uh, so throughout the process, we're gonna continue negotiations. So say we have nine hundred parcels in the state where we sit right now. Uh, by the time construction comes, we're, we're hoping that that number is much, much, much smaller, uh, and, uh, so it's one of those things too, where even when we start construction, we're gonna still be negotiating with people here and there, so. Uh, yeah, so we're at nine hundred, right now going in front of the I U B, I think, um, everybody's definitely under, it's the same understanding that that number does not reflect where we're gonna start construction at by, by any stretch.
I think there's been some articles recently that have made the people that really don't want it on their land be concerned that if they don't take the money you're offering, that they're gonna end up, uh, less and it really, it's just, it's just beating them down a little bit and I just hate that attitude of, we'll just offer more money. And if they don't take that money, then we'll just take it. Then they'll be sorry they didn't take our money. And I just hate those people that are sitting there, really want to not have you on their land, but you, you still say one way or the other, we will get it. But the reroute is not possible in Iowa. It's only possible in North Dakota. That's the final question.
Yeah, and that's the, we have the ability now that we're reassessing and reapplying in North Dakota to change the route. Um, in Iowa, that's not the case. We're locked in. I mean, we still have a couple feet of wiggle room here and there, but, uh, especially this close to the I U B process, there, the end-all-be-all when they say, you know, this is your route, uh, and, uh, once it's permitted, uh, then, then we can go from there. Uh, but I know they're gonna keep negotiating, uh, this, this plan.
I know we can't change the rules, but I think it's a big decision for three people to make and a big decision for two people that just got on the board a couple months ago, so this, yeah, yeah.
Let me ask you this, then. So I U B, I I I think I'm tracking all this. I mean, I'm, yeah, it's, there's a lot to track here. So the I U B pretty much dictates to you that the track, that your original plan is where you have to be running?
Yeah, we send out, uh, very early on, we send out our route plan to the I U B, um, and then from there, we begin negotiations, um, and, uh, I I think even, there's a certain period of time and it's, it's kind of confusing to somebody down here on more than the, the county level permitting side, but. I I think the I U B has to review our route before we can even get outreach to landowners, um, and then once that begins, then the closer we get to the process and the more land we sign, or we sign from a constructability standpoint, as well as a permitting standpoint, it gets, our board will get smaller and smaller and how we can adjust, so.
Sure.
There's certain areas that, you know, say we, we sign a whole bunch of land, uh, you know, say sixty percent of the county at one point we have signed and just the, you know, relative tract, uh, if we were to end up having to, you know, reroute substantially, then. It could be a constructability issue. We could be rerouting over land that can't do the whole surveys, uh, different river body crossings where we can cross different places, uh, so, uh, at this point, I think we're pretty much set in stone, uh, until we get our I U B.
From your perspective or I U B's perspective?
From our perspective, yeah. Well, and I U B is not, then, we have, we're basically corridored with the I U B at this point. We've sent them our engineered flats.
Well, were you corridored with North Dakota as well?
Yeah, and then, so now we're, basically, our, our permit has been denied, so we can go back and address it and then we reapply.
So if I U B did something similar to that, because the the Tims of the world and Karens and those actually had an impact with them and they said, you know what, we're gonna broaden your corridor or we want you to reapply and find ways around their properties? That could happen and then you guys would have the authority then to go out and search different ways. Okay, I'm, I'm starting to understand it.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, I I think the main issue was maybe a, an area near Bismarck in North Dakota.
Okay.
That we're gonna have to rework, uh, so, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we do have to get our, do our sequestration site, so, uh, yeah, like, uh.
Gotcha.
Once we're reapplied in North Dakota, that's when, you know, it's, it's basically back to corridor.
So this article says Summit can, uh, appeal the decision in state court that indicated on Friday that they will file a new application.
Want to wait for days?
So that's kind of, it's an appeal and it's a new application. I was right on.
Yeah, I would say the order, you know, it's more of us just like completely reapplying.
Revised proposal.
Yeah, we revise permit, but it'll be.
They said.
All right, well, then just, we have no discussion or no take action item on this. I just thought it was good to find out what the cap that we have on our decisions here in Iowa.
Sometimes it's hard to put all these pieces together over the, over the long time that we've been talking about this.
It's.
You know, I mean, it's, it offers some clarity, you know, so there's probably more that you guys could, you know, for the folks that don't want the pipeline in their property, or at least nothing, or the way it's being proposed. You know, you still have a lot of room to operate with the I U B to intervene, so to speak.
Yeah, that's the I U B, the I U B's gonna hear, you know, all the interveners out. I think, uh, everybody gets a chance to kind of speed their piece and, you know, we're, we're way against that and the work we've done, uh, up to this point, and I, I think it's gonna be a, a pretty cool process to witness, so.
It's gonna be something, because, uh, every time somebody files something, I get it on my watch, you know, it's like every day, I can, you know, so.
But it's gonna affect construction or any, any of our timeframe and I will, will definitely roll that out to you, make sure everybody's above this, understands, but I know it's all hands on deck in, uh, North Dakota and they plan on getting it, uh, resolved pretty quickly, so.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the update. I appreciate that. Anybody else have anything from Riley?
Nope.
Okay.
Be continued.
We have to be continued, no doubt about that. Uh. I don't think we got anything else, so it's citizens input.
I got one question for Colin, and that kind of piggyback. Crossing permits that the county has to provide for construction of this pipeline. Maybe we shouldn't be talking about, I don't know, we should be talking about, I don't mean, but what happens if. One landowner has not signed and we do not issue a crossing permit across our right of way, because technically that's half of landowner's property to begin with. We just have an easement to maintain a road in that. Need to do some research, what kind of pickle that could possibly put us in?
I think we have, and I I can go over refresh, but my general understanding is that the I U B is kind of the decider, that if. The I U B permits it, I don't, because that's what we discussed last time I was in here about the federal case that went through Iowa and whether or not, I know it was a, an ordinance passed by, uh, the county, which is different than a permitting issue, but I think. Generally speaking, the larger controls, the smaller in government, um, and so.
We've been getting that a lot lately.
We've noticed that.
And so, again, I, in order to speak more authoritatively, I would have to go back and hit the books, but I, I know that once the I U B approves it and permits it, it's going to be tough for a, um, smaller governmental body. To push back against the state administrative agency.
I get it, yeah. But we have that, we carry that easement, not the state of Iowa, but this county carries that easement, and here again, we're gonna be dictated.
I would encourage to get some closure on that because we're hearing that you guys, the bolder, has that authority. Because this isn't a public utility. This is a private entity asking permission.
I would act, I would ask if whoever's telling you that, or if you're doing your own research, if you could provide us some documents that our attorney could go over and that would help us be sure that we weren't speaking on a turn, turn to actually find that closure.
That's why I'm saying, I think that it would be beneficial if maybe another light is shed upon that topic, because obviously, my information and my sources may have tunnel vision.
Yep.
You know, I'm willing to admit that.
Yep.
So if a third party, so to speak, or second party looks into it, I would be interested in that information as well.
Okay.
I just don't, I feel I'd be a hell of a position to put our county attorney in to sign them petitions, when obviously, he knows the backstory of, hey. Mr. Mom and Eric don't want this on their property, now we give them permission, come through their property.
Yeah. I know.
I am near the sense of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Based on what we have in place.
So.
Yeah.
Don't forget.
Okay.
All right.
Is there others? Greg, you've been hanging around patiently.
Yeah, um, I went and visited Manila site and that one, other than, other than putting the fence around it, it's pretty well done. All the generators are here.
Excellent.
We have, we've lost a, a propane tank, though I reminded them that they were gonna bring that fourth one up when they put it in Dallas City, well, they already have it in Dallas City, so they have their, they'll bring that one up, I think it's the Vail site, I have them in the daylight, we'll go to that. It takes, it takes about forty-five minutes to an hour and, uh, look at local inspecting site. I got pictures, I will send them to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the generators are nice size, they fit right on the pad, very nice.
Perfect.
Um, they were working in Dallas City when I got there. They were, they were just getting that, when, when they put the building in, it's something, so it really put a, a dent in the ground, so they were working on that, getting that straightened out. Uh, Manila looks really, really nice, but that one will be very nice of the veil. very nice. Avails is a good site. Charter Oak, they, um, had them, they were, they had, they had a trailer up there, and they're, they're working on what the gravel, they've got gravel put in, gravel wrapped on the building. Everything, so they will have the electricity all, I'm assuming this meeting.
Excellent.
So we would be ready for recon.
Mr. Schultz?
We, we got the issue with the have a power pedestal in Dallas City addressed. If our work, if we're having a, we're not tying our.
We were talking about that last night, yeah. He's gonna do some.
Uh, we need to get, get REC and whatever their.
And Paul has actually went back out, sent the guys out to mark our boundary there, so that we know where the inside of it is. And I think we were kind of waiting to see what they did with the rock, to see where we could put that and have it inside our.
The pedestal inside of it.
That's, yeah. Just know that's been, so you're saying I won't have to go over and hit the G F C I on the Charter Oak Tower on the light car blinking, and then a couple days later? Hey, Bob and I like going for riding side by side.
The Dallas City one was out, and I was going in, and they were, they had to, they had to know. Yeah, what it is, is a, is an extension cord from the tower to, to a, a, a outlet that has a G F I on it. And he's been nice enough to call me, I go over and check once, try to check once, equal he's, he goes, it's fixed. He just had to push the G F I button and then reprogrammed the, the.
Push it or not?
I pushed it.
Bob don't have a tongue.
Yeah. I, I did also, I just, I haven't brought it up, and I think it should be brought up, the, you know, we did the one little to- tower shelter down there at Manila, that was the little one that was down here, and they did that on site, where they did the rebuild on it. Boy, it looks really nice, though. They did a great job on that. I was, I was skeptical, and they said, nope, you'll like it just the way you do these with here. And I said, okay, I'm gonna hold you to that. My golly, I do.
When the guys put the, the county guys put the microwave dishes in there, they, they scratched the floor.
Yeah, so there'll be a couple flaws.
It's, it's not hurting.
Nope, they'll still function. It didn't scratch into the concrete, you know. No, excellent. That all you have, sir? Dan, did you have anything? Nope. Tim, anything else?
I just.
I need to hit my time, but.
Finding out if I could get any feedback from, uh, any of the board members that were able to attend the Summit safety meeting last Thursday.
Yep, I didn't get to go. I had something else came.
So, I, I hear it was not very well attended. Did you go, Greg?
There will be, there will be more as, as it gets closer, once, once they get their permission from Iowa, and Iowa, with their safety coordinator and fire department that are gonna be on that line to get in there.
Did you go, Tim?
I'll go.
The, the, uh, when you, as we're doing these, I mean, you said the departments are on it, but I mean, mutual aid, I don't think it'd hurt all of our departments to be there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because if we have a problem with that line, you bet we'll mutually, this county and every other, our entire county will be mutually.
Across from Ogden, it's got propane and a pressure hundred, eight hundred P S I, three hundred. When that thing was cut by a very extended value, like, we had to evacuate, if this, if this breaks, you're not gonna evacuate anybody unless it's people that are right there. They'll liberate it.
And Riley, as we, sorry, what you and I were talking about, I would still like to see if you could push that up your food chain. That, uh, the hazmat tech training, I, I mean, we really don't have a, a cost affordable way for us to have that available to our departments now. And if you could go work with the other pipelines that actually run through here and create something that's a once every three, four years or five years, I mean, Kyle, you got an idea what time would be good? I mean, something like that, where you'd have, like DePaul Farm Line always used to have DePaul come in, that university and do training for, and I went through that, and that's outstanding training. I mean, I, I would really like to see, that to me is, now you're showing that the safety matters, all right? I'd like to see you do that. Craig or.
We have hazmat training, also tech training, the tri-county that we pay towards is, is trained in that. So, so we do have, have several people that will show up for three different counties.
Yeah.
Twenty more trained people in three counties, that'd be, that'd be.
Outstanding.
And we, we basically, we basically do. And that's, that's very, very proactive, but.
And if, if we would have a, a situation with one of the pipelines, obviously, that, that hazmat team, which I was on that, that hazmat team from all four counties, they're all coming, so I mean, that, that type of training, you know, if we, obviously, every year would probably be more than you'd need, but every three years, why I like that number is, even the refresher training is always good, cause you're gonna have updates in how things are handled. You know, and I, I just think that if you guys could really work on something like that.
For three times.
That would be it. I, I, I think that would start to at least alleviate our concerns about you just leaving us hanging high and dry after you're built and gone.
Yeah.
You see what I'm getting at? I mean, if you've got commitments to the communities like that long term, that would really, that would ease my.
The American, the one that goes through Karen, Ernalk, uh, Lloyd, and Rickets, that one, they have a, uh, every, every year, they have a meeting, usually out of holders.
Right, right.
They do, they do scenarios, they have, they have our departments, so we do a, a tabletop walk through. And just.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my knowledge too, that we're regulated, um, no more than fifteen months to roll out training, uh, refreshers, uh, so on. The, the initial training will definitely be a lot more extensive, but we understand that there's turnover, and we're also regulated with, uh, we have to do trainings on outside fifteen months, uh, each year, so uh, hopefully, we plan on doing a little bit better than that. We'll know a little bit more, uh, as the time comes, so.
Well, you know, even as we've worked on different things with the route, you know, and you guys have gave us a broader width on the rivers and, and the rail, I mean, you've, you've always said you're gonna step up, up and beyond what is required, and this would definitely be something that would show your safety concern, because obviously that, that's important to all of our folks.
Just the far, maybe either yes or no, then, then we'll proceed with the, trying to just, family now, to get get training done here, and I'm sure all the counties will have, have there. I see, uh, uh, Sioux counties, they've, they've got, they've got some, they've got some to call over there.
Okay. Outstanding.
And I would just encourage also that there be a commitment, it's one thing to providing equipment, training, but then it's gonna be that ongoing maintenance, for whatever that equipment is, and then if there could be something in writing, and say, oh, yeah, yeah, I can cover that, it'd be nice to know that that commitment is fed fast, because when I visit with the volunteer, whatever, firemen, other goal, you know, we're asking these people to volunteer their services and their time, and now putting them in another harm way situation, and then expect them to go out and flip more pancakes so they can maintain this equipment that we need to make that up.
Yep, great point. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks for doing that, you're, it was appreciated.
Absolutely. Okay.
Every S P J has to be service tested.
Yep.
Every three years.
And we actually got a.
Competition and making.
Longtime chief, so if you got any questions, he can answer them.
Yeah.
I know, it all comes at a cost.
And that's the thing is, you know, as, as, and that's why I bring that up, I'd really like to see some long-term investment in our, our fire service in particular, but you know, even E M A training, you know, for the, for the people at the hospital, and ambulances are likely gonna have to roll if we have. I mean, obviously, you're hoping for the best, but we always got a plan for the worst.
Exactly.
I mean, we, we don't ever want to see a sartacea here, but we got a plan as if it's probably gonna, you know, I mean, our hopes are with the fact that it won't. And we think that you're going to extremes to ensure that erosion isn't an issue, you know, cause that, it was a big concern of ours from the very beginning. It was one of the first things Paul brought up. So, all right, thank you very much for being here today, since that was on our agenda to discuss.
Got any excuse not to go to the office this morning, so.
Sounds good. Did anybody have anything else?
I just wanna give kudos to the fire departments and EMS people that responded to the to the helicopter crash, and to the green men, the fidelity, and the other green men, and it's, it's, it's been 30 years, and it's hard on me.
Yep, yeah.
Glad we've got, glad we've got the people that are, that are doing now, that are willing to do it, do it safely without themselves getting hurt.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah. Thank you to all the fire and EMS people.
Numbers are shrinking fast, fast, and so it's, that burden's being placed on fewer.
Your people all the time. That's right.
I had hair when I joined.
Can't blame it on both.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have anything else? Just, that's great.
I remember you.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, sorry. So, in regard to the first floor restroom remodel, it is going to begin August twenty-first, and tentative, uh, completion is November fifteenth, so about three months. Um, I'm gonna get some info out to the employees to let them know. Um, so that west parking lot will be completely eliminated from our employees to park there entirely. No vehicles, no county vehicles, nothing. Um, there will be access for the Sallyport or the law enforcement, um, and also for their food delivery for the jail.
Good.
Um, Dave Rothe came to the meeting, the reconstruction meeting yesterday, cause I was unable to attend. Um, but it sounds like we're off and rolling here in a couple of weeks. I mean, that's only during construction.
Once construction is done, then.
I just, just.
Right, as, I mean, as long as they need to utilize our parking lot, they're going to, through the, if it's all three months, then it's all three months. That's what we're planning for.
And the remodel is just on those first floor, both men and women's?
Yep, the men's and women's.
Unless we bother them, hopefully the querkers are done.
Hopefully, yeah, or you know, nothing they spotted anywhere out there.
Do you foresee an issue with, I mean, we're gonna be limiting our restroom in, in general, in the courthouse, do we need to get a temporary.
Porta potty?
Yeah, a nicer one, like an air-conditioned one.
Well, you know, like what you had out at your graduation?
Yeah, probably even nicer than that. I mean, I don't know, nice, but it was.
Were you for outside?
Like, yeah, we're down.
No, no. So we have, we have restrooms that are available down at the chair's office, in the hallway. We have the third floor restrooms.
We should.
And an elevator.
Signs for the public, maybe? Would, would, would help. Because we know about them, but maybe this probably doesn't know.
Yeah, great point. Thank you.
And I guess my, my question, whether they would like, you wanna go outside and use it when they know they can go third floor, or?
Yeah, might be.
I don't know. I don't care how fancy it is, I'm not going out there.
Even if it's air-conditioned?
No.
That was my.
And it looks just like, you got a bathroom inside. And smell.
Getting closer.
What's gonna happen to them overnight?
Yeah, you never.
There's something about him, I don't even.
It's like a.
Can we lock him overnight?
Mine, the one I had for the graduation, I mean, granted, it was pretty rundown, but it was.
I mean, we don't want it to come to our home eventually.
It's basically like a little motor, mobile home toilet.
Kind of like the ones they have up on.
Take the wheels off, set it on the ground, and got steps that go up in it, the doors that lock.
Terry, how big is the garage?
Yeah, and it had like three stalls.
I have no idea.
The ones that.
I don't know that, cause there's different ones all the time.
I've never been to the one that high school uses for the football. Maybe we could roll that down here, because that's movable.
You know, if it's not, if you don't foresee, I'm not in a.
I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
That's a good question.
I think signs are.
Yeah, those are nice.
Those are nice. I wonder if.
Is that the schools?
I think so. They move them from, like, they were at the baseball diamonds during baseball and over at football, so they move them around.
Well, they might.
But we might conflict with them.
Well, they're building that new unit for football.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Doing the concrete.
Are they not gonna be using them?
I wouldn't know why they would want to, cause that's gonna be in between the visitor's side and the home side.
Oh.
Tip them over.
Yeah, no, it is a thought.
Why don't you stop it? Why we can't have nice things?
Other thing that concerns me about that, with that parking lot being blocked off, this unofficial parking lot. Ball through the new north basement, so we can put this.
No, these people will not be parking over here. Can I say that again, out loud, on this recorded meeting?
Our people.
The people that park in the west parking lot will not be parking up by the courthouse.
And then the unofficial.
They will need to acquire parking in the near vicinity of the courthouse, and possibly
Another.
shoe leather express it right over here to the building.
Well, that is also, and what is.
Putting me, I park out here.
How many do we have?
There's a dozen.
Dozen?
Or so. Couple of them are vehicles that are used by the, and not employee vehicles, but.
No, I just, what concerned, there was another part, just when you said that concerned me, is if them doesn't move in front of the courthouse, so it takes up parking for customers.
Right. Well, we've got the lot across the street that's not utilized a hundred percent by our employees.
Yeah, it's gonna be an inconvenience for three months.
It's gonna be an inconvenience.
It's gotta get through.
We just, we gotta still stay open for business.
In November.
We still gotta stay open for business.
I think, like, the rest, Colin's idea of the sign, just, that would be for the, uh, employee, not the employees so much as the people that are here. Just a sign that says, uh, restroom's on the third floor for the men and women.
Down by the lawn.
Okay, you can reflect.
Yeah, I think that's.
If we did do a porto body, maybe, uh, the workers would find that more convenient, if the county wanted, didn't want the workers tracking through the courthouse or handling stuff that they got up, but.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they provide their own.
They probably provide.
They might, a lot of them do.
I guess.
I can find that out, if he's providing. Maybe you, I will not be using that.
And Terry. Well, I wanna lose everything, no.
Kyle was trying to give you guys a nice out, but.
No, no. We will contemplate that idea.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that over the, you know, maybe next week we make a decision, or next week we have to do something.
Pour a empty beer again.
I'm gonna adjourn. Second, you know, I've been waiting for that. Motion made by Mr. Dozark, seconded by Mr. Rollauer, that we adjourn at this time. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose, no. Cheer votes aye. Motion carried. Have a great day. That's what you've been looking for for six months, isn't it?
Um, yeah.
Fortunately, she, um, it, it
Stop making us.
I agree.